At this time, I would like to call the meeting of the Built Board of Public Kansas City Board of Public Utilities of January twenty-second to order. We'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. During the visitors' comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comments section. In addition, there will be a public comments section after the general manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors' comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on the sign-up sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in the open, in an open meeting. As always, the public may also call or email the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will then determine staff's involvement. Attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman, Second District and the Board President. Other members of the board and staff include Jeremy Ash, our General Manager, David Haley, Member-at-Large, Position Two and Board Vice President, Stevie Wake, Senior, First District and Board Secretary, Brett Parker, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member-at-Large, Position One, Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member-at-Large, Position Number Three, and this evening we have Wendy Green representing the legal staff, Chief Legal, Deputy Chief Counsel. Please remember to put your phones on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, roll call. Haley?
Present.
Wakes?
Here.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Groneman?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Before, I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda for May twenty-second, twenty-two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I move approval of the minutes. Oh, sorry, of the agenda.
Wait a second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
This is Rose, so moved.
Wait a second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay. This time, I'll turn the meeting over to our General Manager, Mr. Ash.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick items of note. I want to take a minute to acknowledge the production and operations teams that really showed up during this latest weather event. We started the year off really pretty tough, and the production teams did a fabulous job of, of keeping all of our assets running dependably and, and at their maximum output as called on by, by the market. So, big shout out to them, big shout out to the operations teams as well. The, the, the only disturbances we experienced were a car sliding into a bowl, car hitting a fire hydrant, nothing that, that was just absolutely caused by the storm. So, they're doing great work out there in the operations divisions, and it's really paying off when we have these kinds of events. So, I just wanted to acknowledge them real quick, and I'll reserve the rest of my comments for the end of the, end of the meeting.
So, at this time, it'll move into visitor comments.
Anybody? I'm, Rob, is there anybody online?
There's zero hands ready.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the election of officers. Wendy, do you have a statement or something?
The floor is open for the nominations for the president.
Wakes, I'd like to nominate David Haley as president.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing that, we will then call for a vote?
There first needs to be a vote to call, to close the nominations.
Do, oh, excuse me. This time, we'll have a, if there are no further nominations, I would entertain a motion to close nominations.
Wait a second, I move?
Sir Rose, I second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
I'm surprised Haley voted aye.
Thought about abstaining, but, you know.
Okay, so at this time, then, we will enter, we'll have a roll call on the nomination.
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, so this time, I'm gonna turn the gavel over. Do the new president.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, fellow members of the board. We can continue with the election for Vice Chair, if we would. Ms. Green, I'd like to, at this time, entertain a motion for our Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Rose Mulvaney Henry.
Rose has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If there are any, if they're not hearing any other nominations, I'd move that the...
Okay, yes, for a motion. I move that we close nominations.
We have a motion to close nominations.
Wait a second.
And having been said, Rose Mulvaney Henry is nominated to be our Board's Vice Chair.
We need a roll call vote on the closing the nominations.
Right. If you would, please call the roll for closing the nomination.
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
And if we now have, since nominations have been closed, a vote that can be taken, if you would please call the roll.
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion also carries.
Congratulations, Rose Mulvaney Henry, Vice Chair.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, we would entertain any motions as to whom would be the secretary.
I'd like to nominate Brett Parker as secretary.
Sir Rose, I second.
The nomination for Brett Parker for secretary.
I move the nomination cease. Wait a second.
And we'd ask, we'd call the roll that nominations would cease, if you would, Ms. Green?
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
And if we might, then, now that nominations have closed, if we might have a roll call regarding the nomination of Brett Parker for secretary?
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Congratulations, Brett Parker, Secretary. All right, so, you've got the script. We go from, we have the agenda in front of us. Thank you again. So, following the agenda.
Yeah, it's this time, we'd ask the...
It's time we ask for this.
Lori to come up and write the November twenty-two thousand and twenty-four financial information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, tonight, we'll go over our November twenty-two thousand and twenty-four results. Just take a look at our year-to-date build, KWH, on the electric side. Overall, we're down a little bit in comparison to twenty-two thousand and twenty-three by about two point one percent. Our residential's been down, and it's down year-to-date seven percent. Our commercial's down three percent. We have been seeing our industrial go up in comparison to twenty-two thousand and twenty-three, and this year-to-date, it's up about six percent, so. On the water side, overall, pretty comparable to twenty-two thousand and twenty-three. We're just down less than one percent. Commercial, I'm sorry, residential's down about one percent, and our commercial's down less than one percent. Our up, less than one percent. Our industrial is down about three percent. So, we did see a little bit of slight improvement in our residential usage compared to last month at this time. Looking at our revenues for the month of November. In comparison to twenty-three, twenty-two thousand and twenty-three, you see a pretty big variance there on the electric side, and that's more related to our accrual. We do our accrual of revenue based on the number of days in the billing period, so there was a bigger variance in October of twenty-four, and this just flips it back around, so it should be comparable in next month's financials. So, in comparison to budget, we are up about two point two percent. Electric is, is pretty comparable to our budget. It's up slightly by about one hundred and ten thousand, and water's up about five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, from a percentage standpoint, electric is up less than one percent, while water is up eleven percent. Revenues year-to-date, overall, compared to twenty-two thousand and twenty-three, we're up about two point one percent, which is about seven point two million on a combined basis. From a budget perspective, we're up three point three percent, with electric being above budget by about ten point four million, while water is above by about eight hundred and sixty thousand. Some of the variances below compared to budget, electric up four percent. Some of the bigger variances there, commercial is up about eight point two million, so we've seen good revenues this year on the commercial side. Industrial overall is still down about two point nine million, and then our wholesale is, is down about two and a half million. We're seeing our water up about two percent. Residential is up about one hundred and sixty thousand, while commercial's up about one point three million. And just a final note on the recognition of the twenty-two thousand and twenty-three ERC over recovery. We completed that in June, so that was about four point one million for twenty-two thousand and twenty-four. Looking at our operating expenses for the month of November, expenses are down about almost seven percent compared to twenty-two thousand and twenty-three, which is about one and a half million below. From a budget perspective, actuals are about five hundred and twenty thousand below budget, which is about two point four percent below. Looking at electric, we're less than one percent below budget, while water is about thirteen percent below budget. Looking at operating expenses from year-to-date, we are down in comparison to twenty-two thousand and twenty-three by about six point three percent, which is about sixteen point four million. I will note, in twenty-two thousand and twenty-three, production had a major outage, and that's one of the bigger variances there on the electric side. Looking budget to actual, we're down about three point seven percent, which is about nine and a half million. Electric is down about three percent, while water's down ten percent. And then on a combined, rounded up about four percent. Looking at operating expenses with depreciation taken out to look at our true expenses, we're down approximately eight percent in comparison to twenty-two thousand and twenty-three, which represents about seventeen point two million. Budget to actual, we're down about five percent, which is about ten point seven million. Electric is down about six point seven million, while water is down about four million. Some of the variances to budget, purchased power still is up about eight point one million, while our fuel is down about six point six million. So, that's a net of about a million and a half between our fuel and purchased power. Production's down about one point nine million. TND's down two point eight, and then our general administrative is about three point two million below. On the water side, all expense categories are below budget, with, with TND being the greatest there at two point two million. Production's about eight hundred and fifty thousand, while general administrative is about eight hundred and seventy thousand. So, our change in net position just for the month of November, we budgeted or projected to be about a positive three point four million, and overall, we're at a positive four point four million, with a positive two and a half million on the electric side, and a positive one point nine million on the water side. Year-to-date, we projected to be about three point eight, thirty-eight point eight million positive, and then to date, we're about sixty-two point three million positive. Just looking at our ten-year trend, looking at twenty-two thousand and twenty-four there, the blue represents revenue. So, year-to-date on electric side, it's close to three hundred million on revenue, and about two hundred and fifty-one, two hundred and fifty-two point, two hundred and fifty-two million of expenses, so a net of about forty-seven point eight million. And then on the water side, revenues are about fifty-six point three million for twenty-two thousand and twenty-four, with expenses being about forty-two million, so the net there is about fourteen point four million. Looking at our average daily collections, you know, we're, we're in our winter period here, November being our first month, being with the cold weather rule in effect, our, our daily collections are about one point nine million. The collections for November represent, the November cash represents our build from October and our usage from September. And then our cash comparison, we had a pretty good string going on over the last few months, but in the month of November, we dropped about seven point one million. That's comparable to where we were in twenty-two thousand and twenty-three as well. So, we're at, year-to-date, so far through November, we're at positive sixteen point six million. I will note, we're, we're still putting together December and closing out the year and everything. We do see that, a little bit of a positive, so we should gain a few days going into December, so. So, our cash position, we're at a hundred and twenty-three days in November, and that's down from a hundred and thirty-six in October, and in November twenty-two thousand and twenty-three, we were at ninety-six days. Looking at our balance sheet item of fuel inventory, we've been carrying a pretty good balance of coal at the end of November. We were at about ninety-one days of coal on hand, which represented about eleven point two million. As Jeremy spoke, you know, the plant's been running good. Our most recent coal inventory shows us at forty-nine days, so we've been using our coal that we've had on the ground, and I think we completed our nomination for the year, so it's all good news. This is just looking at our historical days cash on hand. As I mentioned, we're at a hundred and twenty-three days. Our projected, like I said, end of the year, anticipating around a hundred and twenty-seven days. The twelve-month, or the thirty-six-month average there, the red line that, that we have identified, hasn't moved much. It's still around seventy-nine days. When we look over the last twelve-month average, we've averaged about ninety-five days of cash on hand. On our capital spending, so we've spent about thirty-eight point six million of our capital spending. We have a budget of sixty-seven point one, or sixty-seven million overall. When we look at the commitments, and I talked about, you know, bringing in commitments, so those things that are, that we have on order, we've cut a purchase order, but we just haven't received the goods, but they are related for the most part to twenty-two thousand and twenty-four. We have about thirteen million dollars of commitments that are still outstanding. When you add that into the thirty-eight million, it's overall, it's about forty, fifty-two million that, that would have been identified as being spent for the year. So, that's about seventy-seven percent over, overall, capital budget. I did identify a few months ago that we had probably about fourteen million dollars of, of grant money that we had in the budget. We also had identified a bond issue that we were potentially going to be doing in twenty-two thousand and twenty-four, which we did not do. So, that's about fifteen million dollars that we weren't going to be spending this year, which, other than the bond issue, the grant money's been carried over to the twenty-two thousand and twenty-five budget. So, with that fifteen million kind of added in, we get very close to our sixty-seven million. So, some of the bigger projects, our overhead and underground construction are, are always one of the top ones, so that's about three point eight million. We have our continual annual distribution pole inspection, which is about two and a half million. Continue to get some transformers, which is good. It's been a slow process, but we spent about two point six million so far this year. On the water side, our water distribution is about five and a half million. In production's about six hundred, sixteen thousand, water services is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Last slide looks at our debt coverage, and the top one is our debt coverage. That includes pilot in the calculation, so our financial guideline's about two, two point O times, and so in November, we're at, combined at three point one five times, with electric being three point O three, and water being three point O, which in my lifetime here, I've not seen that, so that is good news. Overall, debt coverage without pilot, our guideline identifies about one point six times, so we're at a combined of two point four two, with electric at two point three one and water at two point three nine. With that, I'll take any questions. This will be the last one to approve, and then, once after this, will be preliminary as we get through our audit.
I move that we approve the November twenty-two thousand and twenty-four financials.
Second.
Roll call. Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you call for the, did you turn it back over? Who turns it back over to?
Jeremy from Missouri.
Jeremy, right.
Well, we've, we've kind of had a busy month, as you could probably imagine, with, with this, the weather and, and all the transition, but teams have been fabulous, supportive. We're, we're really doing some, some things already that we're pretty excited about, so that's going well. You know, got to give some thanks out to Andrew Ferris and Abby and Amber helped out with a BPU-sponsored lunch up in Topeka yesterday, and so we might hear some more about that later, maybe, I don't know, in, in board comments, but I understand it went really well, had some good interaction with the folks that were in attendance, so wanted to thank them real quick. And then, as you all probably have seen in the announcement, Andrew Ferris is, is back here at BPU. He has been, and working with Lori on, on transitioning, and he's, he's got some big shoes to fill, and, and no doubt, he'll, he'll do a wonderful job. So, Andrew's back. And then the last thing I would mention is, today is Jeanetta Henson's last board meeting that she has to sit through, so I think Jeanette has been here thirty-five, thirty-six years, and probably been sitting in these meetings for the better part of the last fifteen, so wanted to definitely take a minute to recognize her service, and, you know, she's, she's had quite a journey from, from where she started to where she's ended, so I did want to take a minute to recognize her and, and ask her if she had any comments she'd like to make.
Thank you, Jeremy, and like you said, what a journey this has been. I probably, I started when I was twenty-four years old, so thirty-five years later, I'm standing here, acknowledging that it has been a privilege and an honor to work for BPU, starting from a teller to the executive director. I've seen a lot, gone through a lot, and had an amazing team to work with in customer service. They're the A-team. They know that I always call them the A-team, so I, I don't want to not say tonight, because they are definitely the A-team. Customer service sometime is, is under thanked for the things that they do, but we're the first face, the first voice, the first person you see when you come into BPU. We've done a lot of amazing things in cash operations. I just remember coming in and sitting at that window and having to push in some things, some, some numbers for the right amount of change to come out. That's where it started. We didn't have a currency counter. We didn't take credit cards. We didn't do remote deposits. We didn't do e-bill. We didn't do online payments. We did not have a kiosk. None of those things were there. All of those things are in place now, so I'm so proud of what customer service has done. We didn't have an IVR. If you called, you had to wait till someone answered the phone. You couldn't get any information. And so, through that, now, we have got so many things that can assist our customers. Technology has moved forward. When I was going through my office, that you did not see... it was so many RFPs and so many programs and so many just going through upgrades. IT has been wonderful, they've been supportive. They always say I have all of these ideas that I want to get out. But it has been a wonderful journey to go through all of those and just to see the advancements that we've made. Didn't know if we would get through the policies before I left. I appreciate, I appreciate all the time and the effort spent on that because it is a great document and it's something that we use every day in customer service to assist our customers and making sure we're consistent and fair in all of the policies that we administer. So again, I've just had amazing relationships that have formed here. It's not always about the work, but it's about the people that you work with making it work. And so I want to thank all of you, leaving some very, very close relationships that I've had. But I'm excited because I know that there is so much more on the horizon for customer service, and I'm seeing all of those things. And I just know that we'll continue to grow and just be a better division. I stayed in that same division, so my passion is there for that division. So again, I thank all of you, I thank BPU for the privilege and the honor. It has been great for me and my family, and so it's a wonderful place. And also, one of the things I love is that, just like with me, and many have that story, is you can get promoted from within and start at one place and end in a completely different place. So again, thank y'all of you, and I thank BPU.
Thank you, Jeanetta, and Mr. President, I have no other comments.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. General Manager. Well, at this time, if there are any public comments on what were the agenda items for today, if anybody from the public wants to speak on any of the items that we had today, if anyone's present that's here, or Mr. Kemp, anybody online.
Nobody present. I do have one name, Scott, I am unmuting you now.
All right.
Mr. Harding, please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, my name's Scott Harding, I live in Wyandotte County. My question to you, Board members and Mr. Bailey and some of the other people probably in the audience that does your financials, are you guys looking into the FEMA stuff for these storms, you know, since the governor did come up with the storms and shut everything down pretty much? Did you guys ever file anything for that so you guys can be reimbursed for up to, I think, seventy five or eighty percent of what you've spent during that time? Can anybody there answer that question? If not, please send me an email at caseemailrightsh@gmail.com. I'd appreciate it, and I'll wait for your answer.
I will take that question to refer to the financials that were presented and whether or not that they would affect those during the course of our hearing, and I don't know.
And who might you be?
This is David Haley.
Okay, thank you.
Board member. Board President, I have to get used to saying that, I guess. And Mr. Ash, our General Manager, would like to weigh in.
Sure, so the process that we go through for any FEMA available reimbursements, it does start with the unified government. And so the, you know, the state comes out with numbers based on damage assessments. And so when your county hits those thresholds and you become eligible for those reimbursements is typically how it works. I am not aware that we have been reached out to by the unified government yet to know what those numbers are or if we're going to reach those numbers to where we can make application for the reimbursement. Historically, yes, we do. Any any opportunity that we have to recover monies through emergency management process, we participate in fully, and we have, we have recovered a lot of money. The team here, you know, the operations teams and the financial teams do a fabulous job of organizing with the personnel from the Department of Emergency Management, providing the information that's necessary. There's a lot of site visits involved, photos, lots of documentation, and we participate in that. And and we have been successful at at getting our money recovered. So that's a little bit about the process and the history of it, and that and that we have not heard anything yet from emergency management that we're eligible to participate just yet. But we we very well could in the coming days and weeks.
Yes, that's what I understand. A lot of times somebody's dropped the ball and they haven't been getting it. And I thought that the BPU would actually have some numbers too to be put out so they would have something to work with. Excuse me.
Yes, once we get confirmation that we're involved and that the unified government is covered because we have to, we have to respond under their umbrella, then yes, we certainly will have our numbers available, and we will submit them to the to the fullest extent that we can.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Robert, is there anyone else? All right, thank you. Well, moving on then, I guess it's time for board comments. Let's start at the far end to Board Member Mulvaney Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, congratulations. Welcome back, Andrew, it's like you never left. I know you got an enormous round of applause from Board Member Wakes earlier. I know that we all were applauding in our hearts as well, we're happy to have you back. Jeanetta, didn't think we were going to get there, but but we did. And, you know, I I thanked you and your team many times publicly. I thanked you guys behind the scenes for helping us with that document. I do think it's a much better document at this point, in large part to your team's input and, you know, the the many, many discussions, the round and round discussions we had with with the policy committee team, and we appreciate that effort. Congratulations on your retirement, and I'm sorry this is your last board meeting, but I'm sure you're not. I think that's all I had, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez.
I'd also like to congratulate you, Jeanetta, on your retirement, and thank you for your service. Also like to thank and congratulate all my fellow board members for their new offices for the coming year. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Well, welcome back, Mr. Ferris. We're excited to have you back, I think, across the board here, and looking forward to working with you as you transition into the new capacity. Jeanette, I just wanted to echo the the thanks from everyone, your service to this utility, to our community. I I tremendously enjoyed getting to learn about your department and hear all of your insights as we went through the policy review and just appreciate your advocacy for this institution, but for our for our community members and the work that you did, serving them in your role, but also making sure that our policies reflect that good work and that if there were places we could make changes to better support everyone. I appreciate your your voice and your insight in that. I hope that you have great adventures in your travels ahead. I'm admittedly jealous, but but no, no, you and your husband will have a good time with that. So appreciate your service. Also want to echo the comments of Mr. Ash about, you know, knowing all the great work that goes on when we do have a major weather event like we did. I didn't want to get out of my house just to, you know, shovel the steps. And so just thinking of the work that was going on in productions and operations and really across the board. So thanks to everyone involved in all of that, and that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wakes.
Thank you. I do know many of the comments that were made, Jeanetta, really hate to see you leave us because your face, your smile exudes customer service and really appreciate all the work, the hard work that you you did to customer service. And then for you to elaborate on the the many things that you went through from where you were and the many years that you served, speaks of your dedication to the the organization. Really appreciate your service, and we we pray that we'll find someone to to come and do or have the same type of commitment that you demonstrated during your tenure here. Andrew, hey! And also welcome back, thank you for reconsidering. Really missed your work and know how valuable you were to the organization. Please don't feel this way. But great, great to have you back, very, very pleased to give you that announcement, to see that announcement. And this is your last, Jeanetta, meeting. This is your first meeting, Mr. General Manager, sir. And welcome aboard, thank you for for your willingness to become a part of our General Manager of the organization that you worked with for so many years. And then to my fellow board members and officers, new officers, newly recruited officers, congratulations to each of you, and I look forward to the journey ahead, and hopefully it won't be as busy as we were my first year serving here. And we can breathe a little bit now, it won't be as busy, but it's a pleasure serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, at this time, I'll, again, I'm going to just sound like I had a broken record. Andrew, welcome back, glad to have you. Jeanetta, hate to see you go, but I know that it's well deserved, and I wish you well in your in your retirement. I also want to thank our operations people for this last, this last month and all the work that that they've done out in the cold and also those behind the scenes, the ones that man the phones and and the emails and send out everything and keep everybody informed. So it's not just the people that are out in the in the elements and in the field, the ops, but it's also all the people that are behind the scenes that also need to be thanked for the the work that that they do to keep everybody informed and to keep the operation running. So thank you all, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. My comments will be brief, certainly to reiterate what we've heard. Jeanetta Henson, congratulations on your retirement, we appreciate. Imagine working up, coming up through the the field as you have to lead our customer service. I know we haven't always seen eye to eye, but I've always admired personally the way in which you have been at the helm of a difficult aspect of what's so crucial here at our utility and have done it well, and the respect that you've commanded from your staff and from many people like, Godspeed, as you retire from this after some tremendous years, I mean that honestly. Welcome back, Andrew. As has been said, we're pleased to have the ability and the insight that you had previously to return to these challenges that are ahead of us. Thank you for presenting the financials, Lori Austin, and for letting us know where we stand and giving us a roadmap as to where perhaps we might we might want to be. Congratulations to, again, our new General Manager, first meeting under his belt, coming on through Mr. Ash. You're bringing the experience that you have from your many years here and now in this capacity that you are. And I look forward, as I know the board does, to working with you as we continue to strive to make the jewel of Wyandotte County, at least as far as this board member is concerned, owning our own municipal utility to try to make it as effective as we can and with you at the helm. Let me thank my fellow fellow board members for entrusting me to the care for a while in conjunction with each of us working together. To our outgoing president, Mr. Groneman, I've learned a lot sitting next to you and watching you here. You had to share the script with me, if you will. And certainly to Mr. Wakes as our secretary, the outgoing secretary. And this your first year of service on this board, how you jumped right in. And you and Mr. Parker now, congratulations, Mr. Parker, as our new secretary. Ms. Gonzalez, our longest standing member, I've watched for years how you have helped conduct and help make this a stronger utility all along. And to our now new Vice President, former board member, former board president, Rose Mulvaney Henry, as the Vice President, I'll look to you, so much so in your leadership and support as we go into this 2025. Ms. Green, thank you for pinch hitting, I like having you there for our legal counsel. And I want to thank Kaylee and Chris May, who keep all of our minutes and our agenda together. Y'all got to help me with the script now in the future, but very pleased to have you there. So that's basically all that I have by way of thanks. I want to say the policy and community engagement committees have met before. I welcome and open the agendas. If there are items that any of the board members or the general public thinks that we can vet through this utility, I can be reached at D H A L E Y at BPU dot com, D Haley at BPU dot com. Please let me know individually or collectively how we might better vet some of those issues that we may add them to our agenda where they meet that merit to have that discussion. So I think that's all. Finally, you know, we had one of the lowest outages rates during this recent, I mean, in the metro area. I mean, I don't know if it's happens chance or if it's preparation, but whatever it is, I was very excited to hear that and looked at those numbers and said, can't we somehow maintain that? Either through prevention or whatever it is, but it's working well. And I'm exceptionally proud of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities for being able to show that sort of awareness to be proactive enough to keep us at that rate. So I think that's all that I have to say, and well, oh, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm still learning. Thank you. I'll entertain any any further comments or if not, a motion.
I move to adjourn, second.
Roll call. Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.